This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, good morning all. I'd like to call the planning and zoning commission's team of seventy-seven. Call it a roll call.
I'm Chair Carey.
Present.
Member Henigan?
Present.
Member Hutchinson?
Here.
Member Kuzinski?
Present.
Chair Marsh?
Here.
Where is that?
I would like to leave to the prior United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Lost it.
I'll open it up to any commissioners that may have any comments.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment, really a continuation of where Chairman Marsh's comment in the last meeting. I guess look into our processes around supplement plans review. I didn't find process first applicant asked to function the way that either we as a commission or the applicant. I don't think that the outcome would fully address some of the comments. There's gotta be a better way possibly to do a plan review earlier in the process of elevations and preliminary feedback to applicants. These are things that we have to think through together. I understand the applicant's frustration that we have so much time and effort vested in the project and what we found is that at that point, they do, they are very invested in the project and the flexibility of the applicant is part of it. And on our part, we were frustrated because we had legitimate comments and we were, I didn't feel like they were being heard. This is something that I think we can do better, better process us and a better process applicant.
Yeah, I think I agree with what you just said. I think obviously it's a little bit of a learning curve going here. You know, that applicant was quite used. He had done this process or version of it many times and it was still a bit flexible. So his back was, oh, this is what I've done before, you know, shouldn't be having this kind of problem. The problem is not quality of the presentation. I think that's part of it. These are his. Us that is in a very. But I think we need to stand up, open charge with really assist some of these, I think, guiding them as to what's appropriate. Saying that, as long as I said, we're not here redesigning the project, here to guide them and tell them from a professional or a semi-professional. Issues, you know, there's not everybody's gonna agree on it. Gotta be, we can't just give it, we, you know, state clearly what the, define them hopefully. Not how are the applicant given. And, and, you know, I don't mean to be partial here, but having not got an architect is part of the problem. Create a budget, designing anything has to be personal. It's unskill them. Fortunately, I, I partially. Not a matter of trying to be tough. Much guidance is, and hopefully get our. Maybe I'd have.
I, I, I think what Rick said is, I agree with one point and that is perhaps we could have the applicant meet a certain level of preparation before they come to the meeting so that if there's some question about what we're looking at, don't feel that it's personalized. You know, engineers, craftsmen probably feel that they can design a home as well as any house. Frankly, a lot of new homes have that look. Not something that I'm actively wild about, but things that Argus Homes kind of lean in that direction. I think we need to be very careful putting our own personality, our own taste to the taste of someone else. Builder is putting the investment in risk higher for it. Party's there that are happy with what's forward. Mark, your points are well taken, but maybe we can have application meet certain level. And I would agree that the last, he was a little bit disjointed in the last one. Gets nervous and worked up. Maybe we could just have a certain level so that when they show up, not us versus this, all of us working together.
I want to remind everybody to talk as close as they can to the microphone. The people of Pacific University are having a tough time hearing at the.
I, I think, let me go back and again, fundamentalize, basically the application request, you know, register architect. Part of the criteria, correct me.
I don't.
Well, there's a, there's a period to fill out on who's, who's the design professional limit of before general. But that's on the.
Right, but, but I'm not sure that we have a requirement that says that you have to have an architect or somebody, so just.
Let me clarify that the design. Somebody in the.
Okay.
No, I, I think, and it's something we're gonna have to work through. I, I think. Try to get. Any other, do you have any?
I, I did. I, I wanted to, I wanted to go back to kind of what I said in the last meeting. How does our process differ from other communities? And if it really doesn't, then I think it's a matter of the people in this community getting used to presenting to an ARB or an ARC or whatever it's called. We've never had one before, so we've never had that step. So it feels that it is prolonging things and putting them through more. Now, if the process needs to have a preliminary elevation review earlier than all of this, then maybe that's what we need to do, but, you know, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. This has been done for years and years and years in many communities. So I, I go back to that. I think part of it, I, I agree with you. I think it's a big learning experience and learning curve for a lot of people and it is, it is important. We ask to have this responsibility for a reason and we need to fulfill it.
I think I could suggest that you correct it. A very, very rigid, time-certain, very strict criteria bonus. We're not trying to elevate ourselves. We're in the conception. It may be helpful, Tracy, if, you know, yourself, he receives an application. I'll volunteer my time to come in and try to do that in the past. You just look at somebody and see if that feels that something doesn't look right. I didn't hear. Do it as that and create up with the applicant rather than get into this one. Back and forth. So I think that may be one step, learning curve to give people the fact that they are going to be sort of a quality standard.
But we want to expedite their process.
Yeah, but that may, you know, take some of what we experienced on urban. And I, I, but I'm sure the other committees.
I, I agree with that. So much of what the applicant puts in before they come here are technicals. And the staff is going to do the technical review. We're not gonna do the technical review. The things that this body is going to be concerned about is landscaping and the views from. Whether it's in that, that property fits with the overall aesthetic of Ocean Ridge. And, you know, that, that can vary from neighborhood to neighborhood. But certainly a size and scale of architectural elements such as the windows and the commercial look of a building versus residential look, how it fits with the neighbors. These are things that, that we're here to address. And yes, Dave, there is some opinion involved in that, but I think we're trying to express the opinion on behalf of the.
And I think that's not entirely possible. I don't, I don't, I don't want to be, we should be here to help, be here to encourage, not be here to discourage. But Mark said, great idea. Kind of, because you have that expertise.
I, I'm not trying to be standard here. My other concern is, if the people's here, I said, it's, it has to be subconscious for people. Done, now because it's done in two other areas of town that need appropriate.
No, or, or, or the comment that, that was made, well, I just sold one for three and a half million dollars. That's no very, that's a, it's the, his, his incentives and the towns' incentives aren't perfectly aligned. A builder is, is purpose is to build, make a profit. Hopefully you can do that as well as these other things, but if we have to nudge him towards aesthetics, that's our job. I'm unapologetic for that.
Don't disagree somewhat. Think we're interjecting too much of ourselves painting it with a broad brush and says, this is what the town's all about. I'm, I'm more libertarian than, to have a little bit of writing happening. Mark made a good point, placed on US one. Pretty rough and parking garage is pretty rough, but I, I think we just need to be careful. We want to encourage people to do a good job. We don't want to say it doesn't work. Might not work for me or you. I'm not, I disagree with him.
There, we're not here to arbitrarily say this doesn't work, but there are certain design elements such as Chairman Marsh pushed out, pointed out that make a building look more commercial in its design, less residential and inconsistent with the neighborhood that it's appointed. You know, in the particular house there, it's a neighborhood that I live in, so I have a commercial-like building that I stop, stop sign and look at every time I come into the neighborhood. I think my personal opinion, not expressing opinion, also on behalf of others, I believe. That's why I'm here.
It's, I think, made is good.
I have one final thing and it's not about that applicant. The other application that's forward, when we looked at it the first time, was pretty far out. Mark made really good points and it came back. That's something that's very much been answered. And I think that's maybe we should be working, it still might not be everybody's cup of tea, but it's gonna be an interesting looking home.
Okay, actually, I'm gonna think of anybody else. Neil, do you have anything to say or?
I have a question for town attorney Brian. Is there any requirement to, if someone speaks up and speaks on the house?
Didn't hear that.
Sorry, Neil, I was asking, do you have any comments to make on this?
I've been listening to the whole conversation. It's been somewhat difficult. It's, it's breaking up, but I'm in agreement with the, the general direction that the conversation has gone so far.
My question, Brian, is, is that I know in, in the case of one of the people who spoke on behalf of the applicant last time is also invested in homes with the applicant. So that kind of changed, I think there should be a disclosure if someone has a, is an investor in the project rather than just coming in and stating I'm a homeowner here in Ocean Ridge.
Well, unfortunately, the only required disclosures are disclosures from the board members. Now, that does not stop you though if you want to ask a question to say if you might know something to say, okay, sir, by the way, you know, do you also build homes here? Is that your, you know, do you, you know, work in conjunction with someone? You know, there's nothing wrong with asking that question just to, not to, well, I guess just so everyone is aware of the connection and that they might want to, you know, and then that might kind of weigh or view how they weigh the testimony of the person speaking.
Yeah, it's, it's just a little difficult because we're a close community, so you don't want to be making accusations that. It might, people would be forthcoming if they have a, in a financial interest and they're speaking like they're a member of the.
The question, everybody, everybody that comes to the mic, you ask them the same questions. That's good in this project.
Okay, now that's a good point. Sorry, Rick, anything else? Thank you. All right. All right, uh, I have a motion to.
I'm moved.
Second.
Hi.
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 Colonel, I don't have to read this. All right, pursuant to the executive order number twenty dash sixty-nine issued by the office of government, Ron DeSantis, March twentieth thousand. Altis may conduct meetings of their governing boards, having a forum of its members' presence physically or any specific utilizing patient technology, telephonic or video conference as provided by section one twenty-six before five B two, part of statute. Speeches for public comments explained by the town clerk shortly. Member participating virtually is not allowed.
The agenda, the material for each item on the agenda and the notice regarding the virtual meeting remain available beginning August seventh, twenty twenty on the town's website and is also available in the town clerk's office during business hours. The public was given the opportunity to submit public comments to the town clerk prior to the meeting. The town has developed several new methods ensuring public comment for a virtual meeting. Any person may be heard by the planning and zoning commission through teleconference and upon registering with the town clerk pursuant to the public's notice to speak for not more than three minutes on any item on the agenda. Send this to a virtual meeting as authorized by the governor of the state of Florida. Members of the public wishing to address the body may do so by. The town clerk will unmute the public once the chairman calls for public comments. Person interested in speaking may speak up to voice their public comments. Do not unmute your physical phone until you are ready to make a comment. Remute your phone once you have completed your comments. Persons who cannot access the meeting by teleconferencing using a computer with speaking capabilities or through a smart application can call town hall at five six one seven three two two six three five and notify a town hall staff of their public comments. The town hall staff notify the town clerk who shall read the public comment into the record. These public comment options established for the virtual planning and zoning commission meeting comply with section two eighty-six point zero one fourteen and section one twenty point fifty-four Florida statutes. The public that is physically present for the planning and zoning commission meeting may participate in public comments by coming up to the podium. Town of Ocean Ridge is a facial recovery requirement and also encourages the public to practice social distance. All chairs of the town hall have been managed to comply with six feet social distance requirements. No such handset stations have been placed next to the entrance doors of town hall. This for virtual meeting. Try to only use one device. Keep your phone. Do not unmute yourselves. The information in a chat box is a public record. Call town hall if you're experiencing technical difficulties.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the agenda items, we have two items. The first one is the draft of ordinance regarding sheds and accessory structures. Brian, do you wanna?
Um, well, I'll try. Okay, so just point clarification. I attempted to modify this based on direction at the last meeting. You may see some things in here where it's kind of like, well, we talked about this. It's not in here. Why did you add this? Whatever. So like I say, I attempted to follow that direction. Now, let me just point out some of the changes and the document that you have in front of you. The track changes show the changes from the last meeting to this meeting. So there were no other changes other than the track changes that hopefully they showed up in red there. But basically, what I've done is that the, as far as decks go, we looked at some code sections. There did not appear to be any standard uniformity regarding deck sizes in other codes that I could find. So we basically said, you know, a hundred feet for single-family homes, two hundred feet for multifamily units. That's the way we got it set up now. The nineteen seventy-nine line, we added some clarification in there because in speaking with Corey O'Gorman after the meeting, there was a question on whether or not if someone, if there's a setback line that's already established that appears to be further west than the nineteen seventy-nine line, then we would use that setback line. So we would be using the most restrictive setback line. It wouldn't automatically revert to the nineteen seventy-nine setback line. The language was clarified to provide that there's only one dune crossover per parcel. That, let me see here, for sheds under a hundred square feet, no more than two sheds shall be allowed per parcel. And also provided that no shed will be allowed to be on the property line except for the very small sheds, the twenty-five foot, under twenty-five square feet. Those sheds would be allowed and we're limiting those to four just kind of based on conversation that there appeared to be, you know, somebody may have several of them on their property. And we just came up with that number. If you want to change that, you certainly can. Those are kind of the major changes on, on the sheds and the dunes, the dune crossovers.
I've got a question regarding sheds on property line. And I probably should know the answer. How did we come up with three-foot setback and is that considered every other limitation in property line?
Let me see. My understanding, and Tracy or Deronnie could probably correct me on this. I think we had recently changed, recently, probably within a year or two, we had changed their setback for driveways where we had provided, I think their driveway setback may have been five feet and we changed it to three feet if I'm not mistaken.
I think it was pulled back.
Okay, pull, okay, there was something that we had changed and I think it was felt like, okay, three feet is probably, you know, a number that we can go with. So was there any great basis for that? Not that I'm aware of, but I don't know if Tracy is aware of anything else.
No, it was a comment from Lisa Treppesi regarding our change to the deck and able to retain the water.
And then I think we made the five feet, which was in the rear part, greater than on the, the side part. And that could have been a comment from her too. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think it also, I know. If I'm correct now, it's, it's five feet currently, is that correct?
No, no, now nothing is allowed currently, nothing, I mean, the current code today, nothing is allowed in setbacks. We have a lot of sheds, as, as in most towns, you know, that do not meet our code. Okay.
So almost all sheds in town are not compliant.
Right, yes.
So I like everything I think that's asked, except I think we should reconsider the three-foot setback on the property line. That's my thing. And I, it's kind of like when you're driving to your neighborhood, you do something you don't like, then. But shed is otherwise hidden from view. And the neighbors don't have a issue with this shed where you're not, that's a big deal, I don't think.
Practical. I agree with you, but from a standpoint. Think it's good to have three feet in lives for planting, upbringing. Not all neighbors are gonna die. Really? I think, given the, the British question, trying to point. There are peculiarities that's not possible.
I'd like to interrupt here, excuse me.
Mine is, is almost fifteen feet.
Okay.
So I made it.
Okay. Sorry, I retract that.
And I'm, I'm correcting my own error.
I want to be probably go forward. Neil, can you hear me well?
I, I'm missing almost this entire conversation. Every, every word, it seems to be like stammering. I, I'm hearing Mr. Shuck clearly. I hear you clearly. I hear Mr. Hutchinson clearly and Penny Kuzinski, but when Mr. Marsh or Mr. Carey are speaking, it just breaks up completely.
You got it.
Okay, let's test it one more time before we move forward. Can we just say the word tested to be?
Yes.
Could you hear them there, Neil?
If that was Mr. Carey that, that spoke up, it was breaking up.
John? Neil, can you hear me now?
I hear that very clearly. Thank you.
I'll show you the mic. How's that?
Good.
Can you hear me? Okay. Get rid of the fuzzy ball.
So while we're talking about sheds, can someone elaborate on the number of sheds? Two, not, not more than two if it's under a hundred square feet and not more than four if it's under twenty-five square feet. Is that typical? Is that what we want?
This is Neil. My comment on that is how did we ever morph into looking at two hundred-foot sheds? I, I don't remember any direction in that. In any of the previous meetings or discussions. We were having enough problem with one shed and suddenly now we're dealing with two.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I mean, I, I think there was some comment, especially on the smaller ones, as far as, well, there could be one on the boat dock, there could be one, uh, you know, on the pool deck, things like that, as far as the ones like under twenty-five square feet. And then the...
I think there might be confusion. Um, are you talking about decks or sheds in that?
Sheds.
Sheds. The, the shed, the, the like deck.
Gang boxes.
Yeah, yeah, that's something like that. And it's kind of like, well, are we referring to that as a shed? And it seemed like, yes, we are. So if we are, then how many, uh, I do remember there was some conversation like there could be several of them on property. And I guess that's the other thing too, is do you want to even regulate something that's small?
Uh, Brian, but Neil was saying two hundred square feet, that's for a deck on a crosswalk.
No, no, he was saying two, one hundred square foot shed.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I can't see any rationale at all that there's, uh, two hundred square foot of structures that are sitting back on especially a waterfront lot that are five feet from the dock. I mean, you talk about changing the appearance, uh, of what a, a neighbor gets to view through someone else's, the back of someone else's view property. It's, it's outrageous. Uh, I don't know, where, where did we, where did we decide that, um, we would get away from the original rationale in the neighborhood that waterfront property would have a twenty-five foot setback? Um, and, and, and now to say that we would allow two ten-foot structures within that twenty-five foot setback, I mean, that's, that's a dramatic change. That's not administrative, that's, that's, that's even beyond P and Z.
I think that's a good point. That's the commission order.
Can I ask the first one, because I'm a little, I'm not entirely clear. I thought this, most of this dealt with, was along the side of the house, not close to the canal, not close to the street. I mean, homes, he was generally pretty well shielded. So, is, do I, Neil's saying, correct, Brian?
If the shed is predominantly screened from view, which you will see in the follow-up ordinance, you know, we are not allowing fence heights to increase, to exceed four, four feet in height in any setback areas. And so it's twenty-five foot off the waterway. So a fence height could not exceed four feet. The only way that you could adequately screen possibly a shed, uh, my thinking is, is through vegetation of some sort. The vegetation is already there in place. And so then you would be allowed to put a shed no closer than five feet to the rear setback line. So that's the way that that could work if you want to allow that. I'm not sure if that exists. I think there are some places that that may exist, um, possibly, that I'm not sure about that. But that's, that's the way that that would kind of work unless Deronnie, I, I guess, it, you know, is there, you know, the different reading or a different take on that.
I thought the rear yard setback on waterfront was far more than five feet, fifteen or twenty-five?
It's twenty, twenty-five feet is the rear yard. However, on this code though, if you would allow a shed to encroach into a rear yard setback, now, I can't remember if I had, let me see, three feet, really.
Can we put some, like, some water back?
Yeah, I can, because I know that we addressed that on fences. And maybe that's, if, if it's the will of the commission here, we could address that on, we could add that same language on this if, if that's the desire.
I mean, to go back to the last meeting, this, this was an item that I discussed in extensive detail. And I thought I had consensus among the rest of the, the members that, you know, the waterfront twenty-five foot setback was put there for a community reason. It's not for the individual property owner. Those of us that live on the water, we are clearly giving up things, structures that we may have individually find desirable to be within that twenty-five feet, but it's not good for the community.
I agree. I think, um, Neil, um, the guy wants to just address the...
I'm sorry, you're breaking up, you're breaking up, I'm not getting your, your, uh...
Don't change. It's the guy wants to address the commission, so I'm going to let him speak instead. Yes, I'm hoping to clarify this issue. So, where we came up with this one, we're talking about actual gang boxes. So, the most popular place for someone to have a gang box, which can be as big as five by five, is actually sitting on a dock. So the question is, are we allowing a gang box on a dock that is definitely within the five-foot setback on a waterfront? And if so, how many gang boxes are considered?
That's a, that's a totally different animal. The ten-by-ten structure that we have always been discussing has been connected with a maximum height of seven feet. We don't build gang boxes that are seven feet high. That, those have to be considered separately. We, we don't need ten-by-ten structures, especially two of them in a twenty-five foot setback on a waterfront property. Now, if someone needs three gang boxes or needs three small, two or three-foot-high items to store boating or pool equipment or whatever they desire, no one's trying to preclude that, but the ordinance is big enough to drive a truck through.
Yeah, I think, uh, Brian, can we, I agree with Neil, I don't know, I'm speaking. So, I think we need to keep shed definitions. And I personally agree that it's not setback, a rear setback.
Okay, now is that the, now is that for the sheds? Forget the, forget under twenty-five square feet, we're talking about a hundred square feet, because anything above a hundred is not allowed in setbacks already. So we're talking about sheds that are between a hundred square feet and twenty-five square feet, that basically, those are not going to be allowed in a rear yard setback that is adjacent to a waterway. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's my, that's what I'm supporting.
Yeah, that works, I totally agree.
Okay, okay.
Now, I, I just think probably this gang box has got to be stated in there as a separate item.
It's a fine term.
And, and there has to be some type of a limitation on the size of those, or...
Well, it's under twenty-five square feet, not to exceed four feet in height. Now, is that, uh, because I'd rather not put a name in there if I can keep...
I, I think that's just, I don't think we want to start regulating. Somebody has an issue that, you know, ten gang boxes, a front dock, someone reported to, I, I don't think we want to regulate that reportable.
Okay, now, so you don't want to regulate anything under twenty-five square feet? Is that, you, we don't want to have that in there? Is that what I'm hearing, or?
Personally, I, I don't think, sheds are the more important.
And do we want to allow two one-hundred-foot structures? Is that necessary?
All right, that's a good catch. I think we want to limit it to one shed. I agree.
I support, I support restricting it to one.
Us on any lot, or are you just talking about near waterways? Because we have a lot of properties that have more than one shed.
I understand, and that's the problem, that's the reason for, for using this ordinance. Do you have it?
I'd like to make a comment again, please.
Sure.
I, I think any lot, if we go beyond one administrative structure, we're going too far. If, if you need to have more than one, you need to go through the planning and zoning process of, uh, permitting the, the structures. Beyond that, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be dipping, dipping into this quagmire.
Agreed.
Can I make a statement? I personally think one is enough. The manager says... The manager says we have a number of places in town that have more. I think we should try to consider, if people haven't complained about factors more than one, we just let, let it go. I don't, a hundred square feet is a big shed. Most of these sheds are much smaller than that, compared to twenty-five.
All right, I think that's a good catch. Really, any others?
The other question I have is, is the four smaller sheds. Uh, not so much the number of four, but the way that it kind of creates a way to play with the setbacks. Uh, so you can't put it on the setback if you're a hundred square feet, but you can buy four twenty-fives and put all four of them in a row on the property line. I don't think that's our intention here either. I, I think, if, if we're going to allow more than one of these smaller ones, I would limit only one on the property line.
Well, I, I guess that's my question. Do you want, based on comments that I've heard before, do you want to even, do you want to have regulations on boxes that are under twenty-five square feet? Because if we, I guess if we remove that section, my only concern would be, will probably be up to Deronnie if somebody comes in and they make a complaint and go, hey, somebody has a five-by-five box here that they're doing something with it, that shouldn't be allowed because your code says sheds under a hundred square feet, this is what they have to apply with. And then Deronnie would have to say, okay, is that a shed or not a shed? If he says it's a shed, then it's not going to be allowed. That's my only concern is just, and, and maybe that's not an issue, I, I don't know, but I just want to bring that forward, so.
Brian, I think this comes, becomes a problem when, when you take the scenario that Rick just said. If, if this is a five-foot by five-foot and it's below the fourth-foot fence, I don't think people are going to complain. But, but if these are five by five by seven-foot high and now you string them along the property line, you have created a conflict.
Are we talking about sheds or dock boxes or gang boxes?
This is what I'm trying to avoid, is I think we need to just focus on the shed structure.
Well, there are plenty of commercial plastic sheds that are five by five that are on the order of six foot tall. I mean, you can just see them lined up outside lows.
And I think if, if we remit, you know, they would be governed by the, they would be governed by this, or at least I think they would. Is that, um, you, you know, they would be, right now, they would be, I mean, right now under our current code, they would not be allowed, because I think they'd be classified as a shed and, uh, they aren't allowed in a setback, which means they wouldn't be allowed on a dock, they wouldn't be allowed anywhere in the setback.
Um, that's the commission order.
Well, I'm, I apologize, but I'm not done with the ordinance. We didn't talk, we didn't talk about the, the dune crossovers at all.
Oh, okay, all right, I, I was just...
I'm sorry.
I don't know why they're...
Okay.
A little bit of a danger and stuff.
Would you prefer to go ahead and just deal with sheds first?
Uh, we, we know where we stand on sheds.
Okay.
Let's go to dune permitting.
So with the, so I have a question, as, uh, section one dash three, it says no sort of roof or covering. Are we, is that going to regulate large beach umbrellas or temporary? Like, for instance, myself, I put up a, it's a very temporary shade structure, only on the weekends when we're using the dune a lot. Generally only in summer. It would be like a really big umbrella. Is that an issue?
Not bad, we were, no, not so many.
And I think the hundred square feet, I walked around and looked, that seems to be about what most of the decks are. Um, I would then go to section, oh wow, there's so many changes. Uh, the la, the next to last page, number three at the top, I just, it's just a grammar thing. Other dwelling units located in the town may be allowed a dune crossover if there is an existing written instrument in existence at the time of adoption of this ordinance. So, no, I'm sorry, I guess it's not when I read it that way. What happens to, if, if, if a written document exists for a dune crossover now, can that be transferred in the future to another owner?
Yes, I mean, it would, my thinking is, it would run with the property. And... What's that?
Is permitted or not permitted?
I'm assuming if the structure has been permitted, I'm not aware of any structures that are out there that it, that are, you know, on the dune that are not permitted.
But I'm just saying, it would be an area transferring, I should know, that it would have to permit it, or has it permitted?
And just a clarification for myself, um, from, from staff, what does DEP or the town or the governing, um, agency feel is most appropriate? A high, a high deck or an in-ground that doesn't disturb?
Elevated decks are the perfect.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and, you know, we're, we're just saying that it has to be permitted by DEP.
Right. Okay.
The criteria is pretty clear. I, I got our permit, because I, I did the last, and, that's my coastal engineer, there was a size limitation to six feet or so.
Is there?
No, DEP criteria, we didn't know this one. Yeah, they're, they're, um, serious about that. Want to say anything? Pardon?
Morning, everyone. You should like five Ingle Drive. Um, I have a, have a concern with the, uh, with dune crossovers when it comes to, I mean, environmental impacts that it causes. But the dune is, basically, as a clarification, the dune is our last line of defense from pollution. Uh, in the past twelve months, we had erosion under dunes. We had, uh, experts here over the last few years, uh, that addressed the commission, that addressed the four-two, uh, experts that, uh, planting of the dunes and, uh, explained how the planting is a vital part of keeping the dune healthy and keeping the dune safe. If we lose the dune or if we have a breach of the dune, have, uh, potential for catastrophic flood, uh, that can cause during hurricanes, high, high water, rough water, uh, that would affect everybody that sits behind that dune, um, probably reaching into point B, so long areas in the, the past intercoastal waterway. So, it, it is a vital point, I think, that we need to protect this. Once, once we accept that, comes the question of property owners that have properties, where the dune is technically, uh, some private property, yet it is also the interest of, uh, of the residents that live behind it, um, and the town in general. So, it, it's, what, what we need to do is, we, we have a, we have a, um, full obligation here, we have obligations with the property owners as well as to the, uh, owners that are protected by that particular. Uh, given the fact that we have experts that testified basically, saying that we need to... Given the fact that we have experts that testified basically saying that we need to vegetation on that dune, we need to be able to have a healthy dune for the protection. And to the area that the recommendations that come from here and the regulations that come from here, that in mind. My personal thoughts, and I've expressed that in some of you, is that if, first off, we should restrict obviously the size of crossovers as small as we possibly can. Decks should be restricted to as small as they possibly can, under any structure, nothing really grow healthy. There is certain materials that have been used. I remember that from back in Miami Beach where I had to do a dock, had a little tiny coral in the water before we were allowed to build that dock with active corals or the dock that we wanted to build, we couldn't build, had to use plastic material that lets light through, basically kept that coral alive. And that is probably something that I would like to put in that code too, make sure that we have the future when people are replacing their wooden plants, to use material that lets light through in order to be able to grow certain plants that still would grow with a little bit of less light onto that dune, to alive a little bit further and make it impossible for the dune to stay as healthy as we possibly.
I would add to that, that there's an education component to that for the homeowners. Something as simple as beach raking. I personally am opposed to it. I understand it takes the trash, but they really just take everything and bury it somewhere else, okay? So they're not taking the trash off the property. And the seaweed is necessary for extending your dune and growing it. We have gone and taken seaweed and put it up on our property and extended our growth area anywhere from 10 to 30 feet after every storm. It just grows out and out and out. If you let the seaweed come up and you let the sand come up over it, it just vegetates itself. But that's an education process. Everybody around me rakes their dune. So I don't know how you, and I feel that I'm opposed to, I'm different than the DEP. I think if you put something in ground that the grass can grow around and the weeds come up through and, you know, you're preserving the dune more that way than putting this massive structure elevated that kills everything underneath it.
And I personally agree, I don't want to get into what DEP allows or what they prefer or not, I'm not an expert as far as dunes, I'm not as an expert. I think that too, especially on your property, you let it grow to a certain point and as I'm concerned, it's probably one of the healthier properties in town. We also have structures, the one, actually the structure right next to you on, what's that, Thompson? Is very well and very healthy, it comes in an angle, protects the dune from washout. That is a very good structure actually to look at, but it uses, utilizes the dune where it can utilize the dune as a walkway, has only the structure for people to get through it. So that, you know, that's way how to do it and I don't want to get into the nitty gritty of it, but I think the basis.
I think it's all good, you know, I'm just thinking out here, DEP obviously are the caretakers of the dune technically, having worked with them for almost 40 years. They're more concerned about preserving the dune, the sand barrier. When it comes to the environmental part of it, they're really kind of very lax about that. But it's going to be difficult to regulate and what you said about this new material or other material which allows light to percolate through to the underside is a good thing. I don't know how we, if you were mandate or persuade owners to do that, I don't know how, that's crazy.
I just want to clarify that I did take your comments into consideration from the last meeting and I put some language, this ordinance that says plans for mandatory approval under this decision shall include proposed dune beach or vegetation. So that opens it up a little bit to help in that aspect.
Yeah, I mean, that's a hard ledge coverage. But I think I agree with Martin, it could be encouraging, I'm not sure this commission should be or that is a personal decision, but I may, when is this coming, commission meeting? Our coastal engineer to come down and field, maybe we're hearing some frontline feedback, what he's seeing, of us everything from Monroe, which is obviously up to Mira Beach, where he's seen just by every profile and every system. I'll make an effort and I think it's, there are ways to encourage more efficient environmentally, friendly, I'm gonna say it, all we can to, first, I think, first to your statement covers that, I mean, at least, but hopefully, questions, we'll see if we can. But DEP, they're more worried about the structure, aren't they?
Ready for a motion?
Please.
I think the motion.
If I can, before you do that, I just want a bit of clarification on the, and maybe this will be addressed in your motion, I don't, no, I didn't mean to interrupt, but on the prefabricated shed less than 25 square feet, do you want me to just remove that and basically say that this section shall generally not apply to what is generally referred to as deck boxes or pool boxes? And just do that because otherwise unless we, just you leave it out or we put it in there or something, my only concern is that that may create an issue for the building official if somebody comes in and they, you know, they have a small box there, but somebody's saying, no, it's a shed, somebody else is saying, no, it's not, and then DeRani's going to be making the call, but that's, that's okay, you know, I just want to point that out, so.
I think, is there any definition of a shed? Because I have a hard time thinking that somebody can make the case that a pool box is a shed. I mean, a deck box. I was, let me attempt to make the motion and then we can discuss the motion. My motion is to adopt ordinance, fill in what the actual ordinance says here, and with it as drafted for us with the following two exceptions, unless the prefabricated sheds below 25 feet section be eliminated and the maximum number of sheds be one.
And, go ahead.
I'm sorry, it also has to, based on what we talked about, section 1.3B, not, okay, the minimum rear setback shall be five feet excluding adjacent to a waterway.
Right.
That would be the third.
That'd be the third.
Exactly, yes, yes. That basically.
Include cities in my proposed motion.
Okay, and also, let me see, okay, I think there was something.
Can I comment on the motion? I think we should still allow for two, up to two, and I think that we should allow for possibility anyway, as being a property. So that might be an option, but I think the whole thing is we're just trying to hide this stuff so it doesn't offend anyone. It's not that we can only have one, and do you have, haven't bothered anybody for ages.
I thought I understood you earlier to stated that you thought one was enough.
Yeah, I thought.
No, didn't. We have a lot of places to have two, and I haven't bothered people in the past, they should be allowed that. That's what, that's, misunderstood me, that's what.
I thought I heard one too.
Well, I, that's all, that wasn't.
I was a little surprised to hear you say it.
That's obviously changed the way I said. Can we send it back and have it recrafted?
I think we need to move it along to the commission and they come up with, you have an opportunity there. I want to hear it. Can anybody second the motion?
Sorry, yes, I second because I helped add to it. Yes, I second the motion.
This is Neil online. Could I have a clarification that the ordinance that we are motioning and going to vote on is one, restricted to one structure?
Correct.
I'm sorry, it's breaking up again.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion to second. Hold it, favor.
Aye.
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 Aye. Hey. Motion carried. Brian, let's take it through.
Right, okay, let me see, just, I'll just point out once again, the changes from the last meeting are in track changes, and the one thing that I did change in there is to provide that the heights of walls and fences, you know, would be, let me see here, they're at the top of those. Okay, so I added clarification language in there to provide that property abutting a waterway in the rear yard setback, the fence cannot exceed four feet in height. And so I think that is the 25 foot in most cases. I added the language that the adjacent, that the fence height shall be measured from the adjacent grade. Now on chain link fences, I wasn't that clear on how the discussion went, so I just thought, well, let me go ahead and I'll just strike out not permitting a chain link fence except where it is on a construction site. So I don't know if you all want to discuss that, talk about that, give direction on that, do that. The other thing, the other clarifying language I added was that as far as the material that makes up a fence, it must be constructed of material manufactured for such purpose so somebody can't come up with, I'm assuming, say plywood or something like that and say, here's my fence. So those are the major changes.
I have a question, sorry. Help me understand, it says in number A that fences, walls and hedges or similar structures may be erected or maintained along or adjacent to a lot line. Then all of section C talks about all these structures in a setback. Where does it say you can put these things in a setback? And why can you put them in a setback?
Well, the first part, number A, in residential districts, fences, walls, hedges or similar structures or appurtenances may be erected or maintained along or adjacent to a lot line.
So that is within the setback all the way to the lot line. So what happens then with hedges that are more than four foot tall?
Well.
Many hedges are throughout town.
And we, right, and it's my understanding, and this does not change it, that say, hedges that are in a rear yard setback, a abutting a waterway, this does not impact that, okay? It impacts a fence because we did not include in the part that, the applicable part where it's got one of the changes, the height of walls, fences or similar structures or appurtenances located in a front yard setback or a rear yard setback where the property is adjacent to a waterway shall not exceed four feet in height. We don't say hedges, walls, and, I mean, we don't say fences, hedges and walls, okay?
What if you have a, what if you have a hedge in a front yard that's more than four feet that's not abutting a waterway?
Inside of the wall, the height of a wall fence or hedge.
And it's six feet for side yard, there's no way. I mean, most of our properties in town have far more than four and six feet hedges all the way around their property.
And I don't see anything in the current code, and I could be wrong, I don't know if DeRani or, but I'm not aware of this, I'm not aware of anything in your current code that restricts the height of a hedge.
So, so.
There is?
And there is a.
Okay.
Please repeat that, could you please clearly repeat what was just said?
I think Carla had said something, that there is something in the vegetation code that restricts the height of a hedge.
Seems to be, and I think this was many years ago when I was buying my property, that you're not supposed to have more than six foot in front of a home, but that isn't enforced, obviously, in many cases now. That doesn't, look at it a long time ago, but I thought that was the case.
And that was my concern was just if we were getting more detailed in all of this, are we going to start creating a lot of enforcement issues where we want more landscaping, not less? I understand on a waterway, you do not want your waterway blocked, and I completely agree with that. But I just wanted to be sure that it succinct.
Why are we, I'm just questioning why we have hedges?
The only thing I, and that's, right, I mean, that's the, the only thing I can think of is that it was already, it was set up that way, and maybe we should, maybe we should kind of pull edges out of this because, yeah, because we're dealing, we're primarily dealing with fences here.
Yeah, I think hedges should work from this section. And that gets to my other question, and sometimes things evolve and we had a recess since we started this, and I'm not recalling why we even have this in front of us right now, is it, it's basically a code to change fence height, current fence height from four foot to six hundred foot. And wasn't, didn't that kind of come out of when we were going to have sheds on the property line? And now we've taken the sheds off the property line.
What's the point?
Right, I get it.
The four foot has worked for this town for a long time. Most people kind of, I have a four foot that's buried in a eight foot hedge, but it kept my dog in, it did serve its purpose. And in some cases, those people have the vinyl chain link fence hidden back and the edge is all grown around it. I'm not sure why we're changing the fence height at all.
I agree, and I also have some chain link sections here. I don't think we can, not in favor of allowing chain link fence. If planted, that's what I call a living, where you have to plant a hedge, you want to put a fence or chain link. I think we need to direct the vinyl cover, not a, the galvanized exposed fence. And I think the.
And I think the current code, why is vinyl, the irony, not, so.
I just want to make sure we're.
I'm not sure we even need to be doing anything here.
But if our current.
Oh, I, I have other, another question. Um, if, if you live on the waterway, have young children, stupid dogs, um, and you put the, all enough, and you put a fence right along your property line, you can see through because you want to see beyond it, but you don't want to see junior go take a swim. Uh, is that allowable or does that fence have to be twenty-five feet off of the water?
Good question.
And, and pools, pools are built out almost to that point. You have to have fencing around a pool, so.
Like.
It's made of fallen to that.
And I'm just sharing with your other community that you can put a fence, but it has to be a different fence. It can't be a chain link, it has to be a piece of, I mean, that's.
Frank, correct. Um, what you said to about on the property line is some people, they have to be four feet, that's twenty-five foot setback.
Correct.
It can't be a time of the six feet, uh, be, technically not.
To, today you can't do a six.
And you can, don't have waterway, you, so your property can be.
Rear and sides.
So our current fence ordinance is six foot?
Yes, in certain areas.
In some areas, yeah. In the front of your property, it's six foot. If you, in the rear, um.
What are sides?
The rear and side.
Six feet.
Side or rear yard setback shall not ex.
I thought that was a change, you know?
No, no.
The four feet is for, it's getting full barriers, correct.
I agree with what you were saying, Rick, that, um, we probably don't need this except the fact that you said our current code has hedges in it and we were just talking about removing them. So that might be the only change we would need to the fence ordinance.
Remove the hedge.
Just to remove the hedge and leave it under landscaping. Pardon?
Oh, that's your current code already? The code section is fences, walls and.
One thing.
So wanted to remove that. I think we'd need to look at our other codes to make sure that we have something.
I think again, it goes back to the construction, fences, walls, other similar structures, some of the, fences, you know, or a hedge is a, in a temporary area.
Bottom line, all I was trying to accomplish was that our hedges not be limited to four or six feet.
Totally agree. But I don't think it should. All right, do we want to?
I mean, it, it almost sounds to me like what you, you know, you, you know, the direction is there's really no need to proceed forward with this ordinance. I guess, is that the direction I'm?
I agree.
Okay.
I agree. So do we want a motion?
Um.
Well, I, I guess just it would just be moved to deny, uh, the ordinance, uh, the proposed ordinance on fences. Move to, well, let me put it this way. You know what, um, I guess I will, um, talk with Tracy, but I'm not even sure you need a motion on this. Your direction is to, we don't need this ordinance. There's no need to proceed forward. And so therefore, I think staff, I don't think we were directed to bring this forward by anyone. It came forward as a result of dealing with the shed portion of it.
Right.
Uh, and so therefore, I think staff can, based on your direction, uh, I think staff can probably decide, okay, there's no need to carry this further anywhere because there wasn't direction from the commission. There wasn't direction from anyone else to bring an ordinance like this forward. It was a result of dealing with the other ones, so. Uh, if Tracy's okay with that, okay.
Give me consensus that that was the board wish.
Yeah, I think there's.
I agree.
I agree. Thank you. Thank you, it was good discussion, but move on. Um, is that, a little, a little.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Neil. Thanks, Neil.
Thank, thank you.